Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order this evening. Just so that everyone's aware, Mayor Larry Snively has a really bad cold. We were very glad that he decided not to come tonight because we don't want to catch his cold. So Larry, if you're listening at home, we hope that you get some rest and get better right away. And Council Bjorkman's off this evening as well. He's away on vacation, and he'll be back for next meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to ask if anybody has a cellphone, if you could turn your phones on to vibrate, so that we don't have the meeting interrupted with the phone ringing. So I'll call the meeting to order. And do we have any closed-meeting reports? No closed-meeting reports this evening, so any declarations of conflict of interest? Council Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. I just have a conflict on 8.4 because my children attend the Harrow daycare, so I will be declaring conflict on that topic and not voting.
Thank you very much. I need an adoption of the published agenda for this evening, a regular council meeting of October 21st, 2019. Moved by Council Garan and supported by Council Bowman. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor? That's carried. I need an adoption of the minutes from the regular council meeting of October the 7th to be adopted and circulated. Council Verbeek and Council Bowman, any questions on the minutes from October the 7th? I see none, so all in favor? Oh, Council Van Der Olen.
Do those minutes include the minutes of the Union Water Supply System? Because I see those minutes are before us here in our package. Are those part of...
Through you, Mr. Chair, I apologize to Council Van Der Olen. If you could elaborate, I'm not...
The minutes from the Union Water Supply System don't accurately reflect one aspect of the meeting we had last month, and I asked them to correct these minutes at their meeting last week, and they said they did, but I still see that it's missing here that... But I don't know if that's part of the...
Oh, I see. Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, council at this level normally just receives those minutes, but certainly if there's an item that needs to be corrected in there, that should go back to Union Water.
Well, I just want to point out that, you know, we had a boil water advisory, and I wanted the minutes to show that the town of Essex representative, me, asked extensive questions about this and required that they give us some more answers because they weren't going to, and the minutes don't show that. And I also asked them that they included the level of contamination that sample had, and that's not in here. They said that they would correct it, so I suppose that the official one will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Van Der Olen. All in favor of moving the reports? That's carried, as with the question amended. Adoption of the minutes from the special council meeting, minutes from September 23rd, 2019, be adopted and circulated. Moved by Council Bowman, supported by Council Garan. Any questions on that meeting minutes? I see none, so all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We have one public presentation this evening. We have the Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua, speaking about the rebate check presentation to the town of Essex on the aerator upgrades. And we have Karen Burgess here. Sorry, Karen Burgess. She is the Senior Operations Manager, Essex Hub, and Susan Button, Aqua Business Development Manager for Southwest and Essex Regions. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening and thank you. So on... The IESO, Independent Electrical Safety Authority, and Aqua's Pay for Performance Program. In addition to this rebate check, the town will also realize annual savings of approximately 142,000 kilowatt-hours per year, and that equates to about $22,000 in savings annually on your hydro. So we're really happy with the success of this project. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Burgess. She's the Senior Operations Manager, and she'll talk a little bit more about the project itself.
Thanks, Susan. In 2016, Aqua conducted an energy audit of the wastewater facilities and identified energy-efficient retrofits on both wastewater lagoon systems. These retrofits reduced hydro costs and also improved the process. In September 2018, seven new aerators were installed at Colchester Lagoon, and in April 2018, four new aerators were installed at Harrow Lagoon. For those of you who are not familiar with aerators, these aerators are necessary to bring oxygen to the cells of the lagoons. These aerators consume a great amount of hydro, so we're very pleased that these projects were successful in reducing consumption and ultimately saving the town money. As your service provider, we will continue to look at ways to optimize and reduce energy demands in partnerships with the town, and we thank you very much for taking part.
Well, thank you. We very much appreciate the check. That's a lot of money. Any comments from any of the councils? I'll give you an opportunity to talk if you want to say anything. Okay? I'm going to have our CEO have a few words here. Chris Nepsey.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I guess in my role as Director of Infrastructure as well, I just wanted to say this is something, and they noted in there, this is something that Aqua as a service provider for us continues to do for us. This isn't something we ask them to do. It's something that they're motivated on their own. They come forward to us looking for these efficiencies to make our systems better, so I applaud those efforts. I mean, that's part of the reason that this council entered that 10-year contract with them. So those continued partnership is good news, and I think we all welcome the checks, but you know, the green aspect of it is also just as important, so...
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to come up, we'll do a... I see you have a check there to present to us, so if you want to come up to the front right here, we'll have a picture taken for the paper. I asked Chris Nepsey to join me in this picture.
Should be the requirement.
Yeah. If you come, you bring a check. Okay, so moving on, number eight on the agenda, reports from administration. Our first report, 8.1, is Chief Administrative Officer's Report, 2019-01, and this is in regard to corporate strategic plan. And I'll pass it over to Chris Nepsey, our CEO, CAO, for presentation.
Perfect. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I am very proud and very excited to bring this, to present this for your approval tonight, the Town of Essex 2019 to 2022 Corporate Strategic Plan. The strategic plan helps define who we are as an organization and provides us guidance on where we are going. It provides us with a common focus, outlines our shared priorities and strategies to be achieved over your term of council. It also establishes a commitment, which I think is a very important word, a commitment from the town to our citizens and our stakeholders in pursuing these key areas of focus. So how is it developed? I'm just going to take you a little bit through of the background there. It was developed through thoughtful consultation and dialogue with our residents, with staff, with stakeholders, with council. We had sessions with the entire staff. We had sessions with council. We provided an online survey to gather feedback from our residents and businesses and stakeholders. We had nearly 500 people respond to that survey. Some tidbits from that survey, when asked what they enjoyed most about the town of Essex, 56% of them responded proximity to family and friends. That ties into the hub of the county, that location of where we're at. 51% noted the sense of community. 45% noted public safety. 39% noted parks, trails, and open spaces. So all of those, you know, that's valuable input from those residents, right? That sense of community, the public safety, the trails, open spaces. Furthermore, when we provided them a list of priorities, they responded with the four top ones being, as you can see there, growth and development, local economy, balancing rural and urban needs, and service delivery. So those are the four top values that they noted. So we gathered that input. We gathered that discussion with council. We gathered a discussion with staff. We had additional public workshop with council to ensure that your vision was captured. We incorporated all of those comments. From all that consultation, we ended up with six key values for the plan. So the top six values identified throughout this process were progressive and sustainable infrastructure, healthy community and quality of life, financial and economic stewardship, vibrant growth and development, citizen and customer experience, organizational effectiveness, and resiliency. A lot of these words you see in a lot of strategic plans, but they're very... A lot of focus and a lot of energy was determined on what words to use, you know? It's not just growth. It's vibrant growth. It's not just customers' experience. It's citizen experience because, you know, it's more than just being a resident. It's more than just being a taxpayer. It's more than just being a counselor. You know, you're a citizen. You're part of this community and driving where we need to go. So each of those priority areas is broken down through the report. Within that, there are recommended goals and actions based on all of that feedback. The actions and goals aren't necessarily the work plan. They're a high-level list of those key areas, of things we want to target, things that you want to target for this community. From that now, the real work starts on my end. My staff, we're going to come up with a work plan on our end that drives results for this plan and fits into this plan. You'll see we'll continue to... It's going to be very present in your term, this strategic priority. Whether it's on every council report, you're going to see these values and how each one of those reports tie back to those values. In a lot of the discussion, I'm going to be coming back to council multiple times throughout the year to touch back, touch base, and make sure that we're on track with what you want, make sure that we're also recognizing the goals that we're achieving. A lot of times, we don't get to brag on things that we're doing to achieve these goals that you want, so this gives us an opportunity to ensure that we're on track that way. So, you know, if that approval comes tonight, like I said, the real work begins. We'll continue on this plan. You're going to see this plan a lot. You're going to hear about this plan a lot. I'm very proud of the work that staff and council and the town has done on this, and I really look forward to using this as a tool for us to ensure that your vision is captured and we move forward in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Nepsey. So I need a motion to... Let's get a motion on the table first to receive the report. Council Van Der Olen and Council Garan. And now I'll open it for questions or comments from anybody on council that would like to do so. Council Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. One of my requests would be to have a new copy because mine has all a whole bunch of scribbles on it, so I'd like a fancy new copy, a couple actually, to bring to the chamber. So, oh, he wants to speak to that there.
Okay. Yes? Through your worship. Yeah, I wanted to get approval tonight, and then from approval, I would present you guys with a nice glossy finalized copy.
Thank you. And I see our pictures on the back, so that's fun. I'm looking at the differences, and there's just a few, so it was good. It's nice to see. As I've said before, I think it's really ambitious. Like, I was talking to Chris earlier today. I said if we accomplish 25% of everything that's in here, I think we're lucky because it's good. There's a lot of common themes in this strategic plan from past terms as well, so it's kind of cleaned it all up and it's put it here, and now it's kind of given us a roadmap. So some of the things that I really would like to see, you know, we have refurbishment of older facilities. Let's look at, you know, the old school. Like, you know, once we pass this around, we can get, you know, the community talking about some of the items in here. The surplus properties, tonight we're dealing with that on our agenda, so we're already picking off some of these things. You know, affordable housing, we're working on that too, so we're picking that off. I would love our council to have a discussion about an infilling bylaw, meaning if there's extra land that's not attached to a developer, a big developer, you know, can we look at making it easier for a developer to build a duplex? For example, having one set of development fees. So I think there's enough wiggle room in here where we can do this. Customer experience, this is one, you know, I've been asked before, what do the people in Harrow and Colchester feel and what do they want? Because we don't have a town hall in Harrow. So that's a conversation that I would... I'd love to have with council at another date, not tonight, because I think it's an all-of-council conversation, and I think the people of Harrow and Colchester, you know, should really get involved for that conversation. That was a hot topic three, four, I think maybe five months ago. I brought it up to the people in Harrow, you know, possibly, maybe, you know, it's on my wish list. I'm not sure about council, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't have a brick-and-mortar facility in the southern half of our municipality to service the residents there. So, you know, whether we go with it or not, that's something I'm definitely going to be pushing for. So I still, I have my list here. This is my new book. I transferred everything over to my new book with outstanding reports. So one of the main things as a priority just for staff feedback tonight is getting a system of tracking reports, which I think our administration is already working on, because we give a lot of good direction here, and then I've been going back and cross-referencing, and some of that does fall off the map, and I don't want that to happen anymore. That's on me too. I own that. So overall, fantastic, ambitious plan going forward. I'm proud of it. I really want to show it off. It's really vibrant and it's refreshing. So as a counselor that's been here a while now, I want to say that we have a really good kick-ass plan now, and now let's just go put it into action. We have three years to put it into action, so I'm ready to put my boots on and get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bondi. Anyone else? Just want to say congratulations to administration. I know you put a lot of work into this, and it is by far, I would say, out of the strategic plans that I've seen since I've been on council. It's attractive-looking. It's going to be something that people are going to want to read. It's the way, the method that it's been written in makes it easy to understand what we're trying to accomplish and where we're trying to go. So thank you again for putting the effort into it that you have as an administration. So all in favor of receiving this corporate strategy plan for the town of Essex? All in favor? Let's carry unanimously. Thank you. Report number 8.2, Municipal Drainage Report, 2019-5. This is an appointment of a drainage engineer to prepare a report for a new access culvert over the James Shepley Drain, and we're looking to appoint engineering firm of rude engineering. Council Bowman? Thank you. Supported by? Council Verbeek. Any questions on the report? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. 8.3, Community Services Report, 2019-036. This is a Special Events Resource Team October update. Moved by? Council Garan. Supported by? Supported by? Council Van Der Olen. Any questions on the report? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next report is 8.4, Community Services Report, 2019-037. This is replacement of an HVAC unit for the Harrow daycare space located at the Harrow Arena. And that council approves the replacement of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning unit for the Harrow daycare lease space in the amount of $14,825 plus HST, and that Munger Plumbing and Electric will be awarded the contract, and further, the project funding be allocated to the 2020 Harrow Arena capital budget. That's what I'm looking to have a mover on. Moved by Council Bowman, supported by Council Verbeek. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next report is 8.5, Community Services Report, 2019-038. This is in regard to the 2020 Colchester Harbor birthing rates. We're looking to have council approve the proposed 2020 rates suggested by administration. So what's your wish, council? Moved by Council Bowman. Move in support? Council Verbeek, second? Any questions? Council Van Der Olen? Oh, sorry. I'll come back to you, Council Verbeek.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm in favor of raising the rates if ours are too low compared to other towns. I just wondered what the rates are in other towns. Will we still be lower? Will we be at the same rates? Could you give us a little bit of background and where we'll be positioned? Thank you.
Mr. Sweet?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. For the local ones around here, so we are still going to be lower than Bell River in Leamington. We're a bit higher than Kingsville in Windsor. Wasn't sure what their rates are with the new docks going in there, so we're still staying in the middle with these increases.
Council Van Der Olen? Supplementary question, were they sold out this year? You repeat?
Yes, we were completely full with the exception of a few that we dedicated to transient slips.
Thank you, Mr. Affleck. Council Verbeek?
Actually, thanks through you, Mr. Chair. That was exactly what I wanted to know, is where we fell in comparison to neighboring marinas.
Council Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. The rates have gone up so minimal, like, I was surprised. It's really not that much. And I did take a picture of it, and I posted it on my social media, and I did get one comment going, "I hope there'll be more enforcement for the permit passes." And I, we all know that there's an issue out there, so I just want to publicly say that. As a counselor, I, we do know that there's an issue in there. The old proposed 2020 budget does have some money in there that, in a, could completely change. I do know that, but the forecast that we did have has money in there that we're looking for parking solutions in Colchester. So it's always on this council's radar, and I think we've done a lot down there with the ramps and the playgrounds and the community center, and I think, you know, this is just a slight increase, so I have no problem with it as well.
Thank you. I'll ask the question then. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Mr. Sweet?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Just to add on what Council Bondi said, with any increase, as long as you show some value and down there, all the docks and fingers have been replaced except for B dock, which is proposed for next year, plus we've added Wi-Fi and all the other amenities, so I just wanted to put there is some value we're doing to with that increase, so...
Okay, I'll ask the question now. All in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Next report is 8.6, Planning Report, 2019-53. This is a rezoning application regarding 37-39 King Street West. We're looking to pass the bylaw as well, 1862, and this is reading a first and a second and a third time, and finally passed on, or passed today, October 21st. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Council Van Der Olen and supported by Council Bowman. Any questions on this application? Council Van Der Olen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Not really a question, just an observation that it's a very healthy sign that people are wanting to build right in the core, to put housing right in the core. I mean, suburban is ordinary, but this is a little bit special. I'm really glad to see it. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Council Van Der Olen, and I'm going to ask if Lori Chadwick, our director of...
Development Services?
Development Services. Give us a little explanation of what's going on in this particular instance for the public.
For this particular...
Give us a little explanation of what we're proposing or what we're passing here for the public.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Maloche. What we're proposing really is a passing of the bylaw site-specific for this particular property. Our current zoning bylaw does not permit ground-floor residential dwelling units in this particular zoning district, and so this applicant has come forward with an amendment to that zoning designation to allow for ground-floor residential units. We have met with the public. We've also consulted with internal departments and external stakeholders. We have heard great comments from all angles. We also have heard that there may be some concerns with safety, seeing as the dwelling units do have, are facing the alley. However, from an urban design perspective, it actually benefits to have eyes on that alley, not only in the form of lighting, but also in the form of parking and pedestrian movement in the alley. It is essentially designed so that the users, the dwelling unit residents, are able to walk, are able to use sidewalks and biking facilities to get to where they are. It is a great use of the public form, form and function in downtown Harrow. It is a form of infill development as well. The space to the north will still be maintained as commercial space. It is simply just rezoning to allow for that mixed use, that perfect, perfect mix of retail and residential smack dab in the middle of downtown.
Thank you very much. So with that, I'll ask all in favor of the motion. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chadwick. Next report is 8.7, Building Report for 2019-09. This is the September 2019 Building Report and Development Overview. Looking for a motion to receive? Council Van Der Olen and Council Garan and...
Just want to highlight that's year-to-date construction.
Yes. I'm actually going to have Count, or Chief Administrative Officer, Chris Nepsey, say a few words on this.
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to highlight, you know, we provide these graphics, we provide these monthly reports. I know the reports can be a little cumbersome in terms of a lot of numbers, and this graphic was there to try and pull out some of those highlights and what's going on in Essex. And one of the ones that really jumped out on me is, is you look at building permit values, so on the top right corner, last year, it was, you know, pushing $3 million in value in September, and this year, it's $17 million, you know? So, and year-to-date, the stat below it, year-to-date, at this point last year, we were at $28 million in terms of building permit construction value. We're at $46 million. That's a great sign. That's a great indication of what's going on here in the town of Essex. And I really, you know, and that ties to everybody here, ties to the residents, you know? It's a good sign for Essex. It's a good sign that we're coming out with our strategic plan now. These are things that we want to build on and continue to make Essex where people want to grow. I think we're on that upswing, and I look forward to this trend continuing in the months, so kudos.
Thank you, Mr. Nepsey. Very positive. So all in favor of receiving... Oh, sorry. Council Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. Just wondering if tonight, or even if not tonight, then at the next meeting, if our CAO can bring an update on the Delabana? I get asked all the time because, you know, we thought the shovel was going in the ground two years ago, so residents in Harrow are asking for an update on the Delabana subdivision. Also, I did talk to somebody from Noah Homes, who did say that the town of Essex is one of the municipalities that holds a bond, rather, I'm sorry, that doesn't hold a bond, doesn't allow a bond for building. We want cash, so if council can have a discussion about that at some point, because I've been told, and I don't know if it's true, that we're the only municipality that wants cash instead of a bond for major subdivisions. So want to throw that on our radar for a discussion at some point, too. Thank you.
Can we pose that question to Mr. Morrison right now? Mr. Morrison, or? No? Okay. Thank you.
It would be his question. It would be my question.
Okay.
Or Lori's question. We can have that discussion.
Okay, so we're going to come back and have that discussion another time. I just thought maybe it was a simple answer, so...
No, it's complicated.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Van Der Olen?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I think it's worth noting that the reason that the building...
I think it's worth noting that the reason that the building permits are up so sharply is the multi-residential six-story building in, in Essex, in the centre, which is worth $14 million. So it's like sort of one project, but it doesn't matter. It's a, it's a great project and it's a great number. But I have a question. What is the difference between the monthly construction value total, which on one chart is said to be 46 million, and on another chart it says it's 50 million? On two different pages, why is that? Like the first one is the number of permits, construction value. Mr Nepsey, do you have a...
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Van der Olen, it's something I look into and get back to you and respond to all the council on. I, it's just not something I don't think I'm going to be able to answer just by looking at it, but...
Yeah, so it's 47, 52, 51, all right. Million.
Yeah, I, I'll find out for you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions on either report? So on the motion to receive the building report and the development overview reports, all in favour? Carried. Thank you. Next up, we have reports from youth members. I'll move over to, I'll ask, I'll start with Cameron tonight. Cameron?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, councillor Susie. And next I'll ask councillor Ava Hoppe.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Nothing either.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight. Next up, we have correspondence and we're going to start off with correspond, sorry. The next is county council update and I'm going to say that there is one item that I'd like to let people know is that last county council meeting, we had discussions about a roundabout that's going to affect a lot of Essex residents. It's on County Road 11, which is also known as Walker Road. The roundabout's going to go at South Talbot and County Road 11, Walker Road. And construction period's going to likely be from July of 2020 and it's going to take about four months to complete. They are going to have one lane of traffic, so you'll have, you'll be able to go through on Walker Road, but there will, there will be major tie-ups over that four months. So just want everybody to be prepared for it. So I'm just mentioning it now. More details to come. Next up, we have correspondence to be received. And everything in 11.1, we'd like to ask for consent with council members to comment on any items of note. So can we have that moved? Councillor Bowman? Councillor Garan? Any items within that listing that we would like to have further discussion? Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Malas. For 11.5.1 Essex County Agricultural Hall of Fame, can we put it out through our social media that we're looking for nominations? Is that what we normally do? Alex is gone, but I think that's something we normally do. We do a call for nominations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see administration nodding yes, so it looks, sounds like they'll take care of that. Councillor Bondi?
Thank you. Yeah, on 11.1.3 Community Living, so the Jingle Bowl Run, it's going to be their 25th anniversary. It's a good event. They're looking for as many volunteers as they can get, participants, is to run Walk Our Wheel and it's on November 10th. And that road closure there, they could use people at the various intersections, Manningham. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. Always a great event in our community here in the Essex Centre. Any further that need to be brought up? All in favour of moving these? Thanks. 11.2 Correspondence to be, to be considered for receipt and support? And we only have the one? No, two. Okay, so correspondence to be considered for receipt and support. So we'll go for the first one. 11.2.1 Association of Municipalities of Ontario. And this is talking about a reasonable balance addressing growing municipal liability and insurance costs. If council chooses to support AMO's submission, a letter endorsing the report and its recommendations will be sent to the Attorney General of Ontario. So receive and support. Moved by councillor Bondi, supported by councillor Verbeek. Any questions? Councillor Bowman?
This is something that's been a thorn in the municipality's side for so many years. It looks like we're getting some footholds into that. It's a huge liability to us and has cost us millions over the years. So hopefully some resolution can come from this. It's the first time it's been looked at really in, in some time. So there needs to be a willingness to look at it and that's great news.
I would agree. All in favour of the motion? That's carried. Thank you. Next item is 11.2.2, the municipality of East Ferris. They have a resolution incorporating childcare services throughout conferences here in Ontario to be received or received and supported. And if supported, the resolution and letters of support be sent to Roma, Ogra, AMO, Phonum and Niora for their consideration. Councillor Verbeek? So moved by councillor Verbeek, supported by councillor Bondi. Any questions, comments? Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Malas. Of course I have to speak to it. We had a similar motion pass anonymously with Essex Council and I do have a list of other municipalities that also supported our motion when we did bring it forward. And, you know, we just keep asking. We'll ask and we'll ask again, hopefully, hopefully council supports it until that we have a politics of equal opportunity. And this doesn't necessarily, in the letter, it says, you know, parents, it's not gender specific. There are families out there that have young children that have a hard time accessing conferences. So this is, this is a good move for anybody that wants to run for council and just eliminating those barriers. So I'm hoping council does support this.
So councillor, what's your wish? All in favour? That's, I seen three hands go up, but that's carried, two to one anyway then. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the list is 11.2.3, Stephanie Wilhelm, request for relief from the town's animal control bylaw 1606, under section 3.04, number of dogs. Request is for relief from the animal control bylaw and to own four dogs until such time as one of their dogs pass away. And this is to be received or received and supported. And if council chooses to grant Mrs Wilhelm an exemption to the town's animal control bylaw, a letter will be sent advising. Councillor Van der Olen? Do you want to move it first or? Okay, do I have a mover? Councillor Verbeek? I need a supporter. Okay. I need a seconder for discussion. Councillor, okay, councillor Bowman? For discussion now? Councillor Van der Olen?
Through you, Mr Chair. I'm not opposed to making this exception, but I'd like to know if we have made this exception for anyone else? How do we police it? People with multiple pets often rush out and replace them when one passes. I know this from personal experience. So how do you police this? I mean, it sounds like a good idea, you know, we'll just wait till, you know, the number goes down, but how do we know?
Are you looking for an answer from someone or are you just posing the question?
Well, presumably some department is in charge of this, so, so I'm guessing would be...
Who would police it? Mr O'Shea?
Yep, through you, Mr Chair. We, we would police that partly in conjunction with animal control through follow-up and partly through the dog licensing procedure. We would note on file the fact that there is an exemption. And then part of the invoicing process in the subsequent year, we would, we would follow up as part of that, as part of the licensing for the other three dogs, because part of this is that obviously the dogs need to be properly licensed. So, so part of that, in the process of renewing the license, would be follow-up with respect to the fourth, the fourth dog that council presumably has allowed an exemption for. And certainly council has allowed these exemptions in the past.
Thank you, Mr O'Shea. Councillor Bowman?
Yeah, I, I believe we allowed this be in the past, but the question I had is how old is the dog in question? They say old, but it didn't say how old the dog was, so. Was there any indication of the age of the, the older dog?
I think I remember reading that they said that it would be, they figured a couple of more years before that dog would die, but they were very generic or general about it, so.
And I, I understand that you can't pick when the dog's going to kick the bucket, but so, obviously, I, I would support the, or the request.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Garan?
I withdraw. I withdraw.
Any further comments or questions before I call a question? Councillor Verbeek?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Just that, yeah, I, I think councillor Van der Olen's correct, like people are, are certainly doing this without our knowledge. My thoughts when I looked this over the other night was that this citizen is, you know, reached out to us, clearly trying to follow, are aware of and trying to follow our animal control bylaws. She's not someone that's trying to get away with something and she's put herself on our radar. So yeah, if she does try to replace the dog, you know, when it passes, it's, it's, she's, she's the one that's put herself on our radar because she's trying to follow our bylaws. So that, those are my reasons for supporting.
Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Malas. I do appreciate when residents do try to follow the bylaw because I, from knocking on doors, there are homes out there that have more than three dogs. It's like a blended family. Dogs are people's children. When you move into a municipality from another municipality, you don't really leave your children behind. But one thing this council did do, that, not this council, the council before, that I don't know if the public know about, and I would love for us to promote it again, is, and I know it may sound silly, but it's there, so we should promote it. When you move, if it's an Amisberg dog and it has an Amisberg dog tag, when you move it into Essex, you get a free dog tag for that year. So I don't know if anybody's taken us up on that, but I think it's something we should promote because it's pretty cute that we have it. So move into Essex and if you have a current dog tag from where you live, you get an Essex dog tag for that year for free. And that's something that council already passed before. So, and she did also leave her contact information in the letter. So if anybody wanted to call her, they could have called her ahead of time to find out exactly how old her dog was. But I did leave her a message and told her that when she moves here, make sure to get a dog tag for free if council supported it.
Thank you, councillor Bondi. Just one general comment for me to end it. I think, I think it's great that these people stepped forward and actually admitted that they were going to have a fourth dog. A lot of people would have just taken the dog in and pretended like, oh, we've got somebody's dog visiting and these aren't all four of our dogs. So I give them a lot of credit for stepping forward and asking us permission on this. Okay, with that said, all in favour of the motion? That's approved unanimously. Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is 11.2.4. It's town of Tecumseh, our resolution for more homes, more choice act 2019, Bill 108 proposed regulations. And that correspondence from the town of Tecumseh supporting the request that the province release final drafts of the regulations associated with Bill 108, with a consultation period of no less than three months, be received or received and supported. And if council chooses to support Tecumseh's resolution, letters of support be sent to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, town of Newmarket and the town of Tecumseh. So what's your choice here, council? Receive and support by councillor Bondi? Supported by councillor Verbeek? Comments or questions? All in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Councillor Van der Olen, you want your vote recorded? Item 11.2.5 Essex Region Conservation. This is in regard to Source Protection Committee, municipal representation. And in the correspondence, we're looking to receive or receive and support. If council chooses to endorse the individuals appointed to the Essex Region Source Protection Committee listed in the correspondence, a letter of endorsement will be sent. So I'm looking for someone to move that for discussion. Move in support? Moved by councillor Garan, supported by councillor Bowman? Any comments? And this is, are you moving to receive or receive and support? Okay. Any comments or questions? Councillor Van der Olen?
Through you, Mr Chair. I'm just curious, are these paid positions?
Mr O'Shea, would you know the answer to that?
Through you, Mr Chair. Without knowing for sure, I believe they are though. I believe they are. There's a per diem associated with that.
Councillor Bowman? Okay, I'll call the question then. All in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Next item is 11.2.6. Councillor Bjorkman has forwarded his resignation from the Essex Accessibility Advisory Committee. So we're looking at the email from councillor Bjorkman be received and that council refer the filling of the council member vacancy to the town of Essex Striking Committee, or would council appoint someone from council to fill the council member vacancy on the Accessibility Advisory Committee this evening? Moved by councillor Bondi to... Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor, yes, councillor Bondi? Go ahead. You're, you're moving it?
Yes, but I don't know what I'm moving. Because there's an or in there.
Are you looking, first of all, the resignation of councillor Bjorkman? That's one. Receive that. Let's, let's receive that first and then we can have maybe some discussion on the next motion.
All right, I'll move to receive that.
Move to receive, supported by councillor Garan. All in favour of that motion? That's carried. And secondly, we're looking to try and figure out if, I mean, based on, based on correspondence that we've had, I think we all realise that councillor Bondi wanted the position, put her name forward and said that she would be willing to sit on that, as, in that spot. She's, she's been in this position before and done a great job. So it's whether or not there's a second person on council that feels that they would like to, to be appointed to this position. So that's the discussion that we're, we're going to have here. So I'm looking for someone to suggest that we maybe either appoint councillor Bondi, councillor Bondi, or if we say no, we'd rather have it done through a meeting of the Essex Striking Committee. So councillor Verbeek, you had your hand up for that?
Through you, Mr Chair. I was just going to say that I, I make a motion that we do the or, which would be appoint. I didn't know if this is the appropriate time to name the councillor that we should appoint, but if that's the case...
So if you want to make that motion?
Councillor Bondi, I, I move that we appoint councillor Bondi to the position to replace councillor Bjorkman.
And I'm looking for a seconder. Seconded by councillor Garan. So any questions or comments? And I guess first of all, maybe we should, well, you can vote no, but we should ask councillor Bondi if that's still your intention.
Yes, if I can. Please. Thank you, Chair Malas. When we were asked to submit our committees, I did put that committee in and at the point, at that time, I said if anybody else wanted it, and Steve did, and he tried his best. But it's a difficult committee to make because it's during the day, but I still have interest in being on the committee. If council would allow me to serve, I'd be grateful.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favour of the motion? Carry unanimously. Thank you councillor Bondi for stepping up. Next is item 12 Committee Meeting Minutes. And we have three items there, so the minutes list and the agenda, together with any recommendations noted, be received, approved and adopted as circulated. The three items are the Essex Municipal Heritage Committee meeting from June 27th, the Essex Accessibility Committee meeting from October the 3rd, and the Coen Park Committee meeting from September the 11th of all of 2019. So looking for a motion to move, to receive, approve and adopt as circulated. Councillor Bowman, supported by councillor Van der Olen. Any questions? by Counselor Vanderdolen. Any questions or comments on any of these minutes? All in favor? That's carried. Nothing under financial, nothing under new modus, new business, and we are on to notices of motion. So the following notices of motions were presented at the October 7, 2017 meeting, and are being brought forward for consideration this evening. The first one is 15.1.1, Counselor Verbeek, School Safety Zones. So moved by Counselor Verbeek, that council direct administration to conduct a study into all of our school safety zones as requested by several residents. And I need a seconder on this motion, then we'll allow Counselor Verbeek to speak on it. Supported by Counselor Bondi. And Counselor Verbeek, if you'd like to speak on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I think it speaks mostly to itself. The concerns were brought to me by residents, and I think we definitely should just, you know, look into it, doing this study around our school zones, the safety of our young people in the areas around our school. It speaks to itself. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Verbeek. Counselor Vanderdolen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. How many of these zones do we have? Have we ever studied this before? How much is it gonna cost to do so?
I'm gonna pass that over to our chief administrator officer, Mr. Nepsi.
Through you, Chair. This is something, this is one of those items that Counselor Bondi had noted in terms of administration getting an outline of reports that have been asked for before. This is one of those reports that has already been requested, and it's something that, you know, thank you to both, that's back to the top of the pile. So in terms of how many we have, when I initially had looked into this, we have very few. I think we have one or two, to be honest with you. And at the end of the day, the community safety zones, the intent of them previously was really just to assign speed limit. So if Counselor Verbeek is looking for something more around those in terms of what happens inside these safety zones other than speed limit, I guess that's something that if you could pass along that information, that'd be great. Otherwise, really, it's gonna come back saying, this is where they're located, with some maps showing you. This is where we think that we could expand to in terms of where our schools are, and maybe the speed limit that comes with that. So, you know, if we wanted to get into signage in terms of the flashing signs that that highlight the speed that people are traveling through those zones and collects that data, that's something that we can do, but there's budgetary constraints tied to those as well. But if that's kind of the intent of what you're looking for in this report, that's something that we'll bring back.
Thank you, Mr. Nepsi. Counselor Vanderdolen?
If possible, I'd like to see how many charges are laid, and how many enforcement events are arranged. Because I know the OPP, when they do enforce these, they enforce them heavily. I know this because a friend of mine got nailed with a $550 ticket going through McGregor recently. So they are being enforced, and that's the reason. It's that hefty wamp of a fine that is considered effective. So we might as well look at that because that's actually the hammer that makes it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Malash. I think what's unique here is we're not just looking at any community safety zones. This is around school districts. So we're looking at particularly vulnerable populations, and I think the school in Ward 2 is one. And we have a working model in Ward 1, Holy Name. Like, it seems to be better marked. So let's take that model. And I would like administration to look at it a little bit deeper. And out of that workshop that Counselor Vanderdolen and I went to with Jeff Watson, Doug Sweet, I think Ms. Chadwick was there, we started really thinking about walking and riding and cycling to school. And I've been trying really hard to ride my bike to school, but it's it's challenging, right? And nobody does it because people don't think they're safe out there. So I would love to see, you know, what is, let's look at the community safety zone, and let's look at, I would love to see, like, a kilometer radius, and I don't know if this is possible in the same report. If I have to come back with another motion, I can, but it's kind of all ties together. Put a school down and put a kilometer radius around that school, and see what what active trails do we have to get to that school? So that we can, when we're talking about budgetary dollars, when we're talking about infrastructure, education, those five Es that we learned in that workshop, we can match it up with that. Because I really think, you know, 30 years ago, 65, I'm just pulling numbers, but from my memory, 30 years ago, 65% of people were walking to school. And now we have less than, now we have 24% of people walking to school. So that's an issue. So from an from an infrastructure point of view, as a councillor, I want to see how we can make our schools more walkable. And this school safety zone is another is another piece of that puzzle, because enforcement is another one of those Es. And if we don't have the community safety zone marked, we don't have the enforcement. Look at the town of La Salle. They have dropped all of their speed limits to 30. I believe it's only during the school year or only around schools, but it's effective. People do not speed in La Salle very much. Not like around our school zones, anyway.
Counselor Verbeek?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all these comments, because I really don't, I don't know how to proceed with this. I actually only found out after I made the motion that we are, we were waiting on a report for it. But it's the parents at Colchester North that have approached me about this. And I know from having campaigned in that area, the kids aren't, don't feel safe to ride their bikes or to walk to school. People just fly through there. Honestly, I would love to see big speed bumps and rubble tracks and flashing lights and paved shoulders, all of it. I know, I know we can't get it, but I mean, we, there's, if we look into this, I'm sure there's, there's steps we can take to make that much safer for the kids that, and the families that want to go back and forth to the school. Look, we have that beautiful natural park and the new parking lot, and they can't really get to it safely to, you know, utilize it.
Thanks, Counselor Verbeek. Anyone else wish an opportunity? Okay, all in favor? Pardon? We, okay, Counselor, or, sorry, my counsel, CAO, Mr. Nepsi would like to comment?
Sure, when my Director of Infrastructure gets hired. No, I'm just kidding. Through you, Deputy Mayor. In terms of getting the data together relatively quickly, in terms of expanding that search, so it might be a phased approach in terms of reporting. I can come back so that you're seeing those transitions in terms of, this is what we have, this is what we can do easily in terms of speed zones. With respect to Colchester, you're on a county road, so now it talks in terms of, I've got to communicate and partner with the county, 100% county road, not a connecting link. I don't know what that means in terms of any complications or any roadblocks, but it's something that we would have to address. So I guess what I'm saying is I'll get back to with the data I have as quickly as possible, and then from that report, it might expand into other discussions and other reports, if that's satisfactory to council.
Something to consider, too, at some point in time, all county roads will have bike lanes. So when we, when we do something that through the village of, or Village of Gasto, maybe what we'd like to do is, they're only gonna put a narrow bikeway, but maybe we want to look at doubling the width that they're gonna put on either side of the roads, so that because it is an urban center or developed area. So we may want to look at making whatever they're gonna do for the bike lane, maybe expanding on that to make it just a little bit more safe. So I'm gonna ask the question then. All in favor of the motion? That's carried. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Counselor Verbeek? So this next one is 15.1.2, another notice of motion that's being brought forward from Counselor Verbeek, Request for Public Meeting/Survey of Our Police Services. So Counselor Verbeek is asking that council consider conducting a public meeting and/or putting forth a survey to discuss the provision of police services in the Town of Essex, as encouraged by the Ontario Association of Police Service Boards. So I need a seconder so that Counselor Verbeek can comment or let us know. So supported by Counselor Guerin. Counselor Verbeek, whatever you'd like to say at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't know if this is how to address this. I was suggesting a public meeting or a survey. Perhaps the survey may, it may drive us to a public meeting. What drove this this motion was several times in the last few years at our OAPSB conference, the police service boards are encouraged to reach out, do public information sessions and with the public. So that was, that was one thing. Also, I want to say that the town has been really good, doing a really good job at, they're building our virtual and our online relationship with our residents. And I think the survey can only strengthen and build this great communication tool by using it, right? The province also has mandated that we all do a community wellness and safety plan. Essex has decided to collaborate with our neighboring municipalities to develop this. And I think the information we would get back from a survey would be very helpful in the team that that is putting together this mandated report for the Community Wellness and Safety Plan. It could be important information for the, for forming this document. My understanding is that the police service board members are to be like liaisons for people that have issues or questions for the police, and we're supposed to bring these to our monthly meetings with our police. And it's, we're supposed to be like, like a liaison in a way to bring these concerns. I'm, I'm not feeling this anymore because I don't even know when a resident reaches out to me, which officers, like, who I'm supposed to call. I mean, I know currently, but that keeps changing, right? So I just feel like one thing I've certainly learned since I've been in my short term on council, is that the people, the residents just want to connect. They want to feel like they're being heard. And I think that improving this can only create better relationships between the police, and it could assist in, you know, proactive policing if the residents feel like they've had some communication with the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Verbeek. So any other comments or questions from members of council? Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Malash. I will be supporting this motion, and I think it's, it's good to just touch base and to bring back that relationship. Relationships mean a lot when you're serving on council and working for the town. So it's a common theme. I have right here the results from our strategic plan. This is the 500 people that submitted their comments online. And I got a printout because I can't, I can only tolerate so much electronic. And I went through today, and I started highlighting every time people wanted to, you know, you know, they want, they don't know who their officers are a lot of times. So that face-to-face, that relationship, that understanding, I think is going to make a whole world of a difference in some of these issues that we're having with us. And I think it'll be a good bonding experience for council, too. Like, I used to have a go-to, Mr. Mailing, when I had, whether it be, you know, speeding as a problem corner. It's actually kind of how, I don't know how it happened, but there was an Essex person in Harrow yesterday, and they posted that they saw people drive through the Harrow Four Corners where the Tim Hortons is. And so I shared that post on my Facebook, and today the police were there. So it was like, I know they're watching, and I know they're listening, but right, building that relationship is just going to make what we've started in this term of council gets stronger. So I'm hoping council does support this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Bondi. Any further comments? Counselor Vanderdolen? Oh, sorry. Go, Counselor Vanderdolen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just confused by this. It seems to be all over the place. I think it's about this, it's about that, it's about the other thing. We have a police services board. I don't know why we would do this to, are we doing an end run around the police services board for some reason? Like, I just don't get it. I don't understand this. Counselor Verbeek referred to some kind of study that other towns are doing. Are we doing this in conjunction with other towns? Is that what it is? Or is this some sort of, I don't know, a complaint forum? I don't get it. Sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Vanderdolen. Counselor Verbeek, did you want to take that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in, in regard to an end run, absolutely not. The police service boards across a province have been encouraged by the Ontario Association of Police Service Boards to reach out to the community, to have input, have open dialogue, either in town hall forms, or I'm thinking, we've been very successful reaching our residents through this, through these online tools. So that's why I was kind of weighing, pushing towards that. I forget the other part. What was the other question?
Are other communities in the region doing this?
That's a community wellness and safety plan that the province has mandated all municipalities do, and they are given the option to do it on their own. Many communities have already completed it, or to do it as a group. Our, our region has decided to, I think, our CAO can answer for sure. Are we working with like five other communities to create one, and then just kind of fine tune our own piece?
Mr. Nepsi?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, the Community Benefit or Wellbeing Plan is something that we're joining together with everybody in the county, and the county's a big part of that, and the city of Windsor is a big part of that. The city of Windsor has the resources and a lot of the horses that are able to do a lot of the data that's behind that, whether it's through social services. So the bulk of that plan, you're right, is going to be similar for all of us. We all, we all tag the same social services, we all tag the same benefits from the community that way. What we're looking to do is maybe then there's gonna be appendix for each municipality to say, okay, well, in Essex, this is slightly different, and in Leamington, this is slightly different. So that is separate than the survey that Counselor Verbeek is looking for. I think the survey she's looking for is simply a how we do in survey, right? Are you happy with the level of service? Are you happy with where we're going with, with policing in our community? And that's very specific, although not tied to that plan. It's something that would benefit, I think, that plan in terms of getting that public input. So I don't know if that...
Counselor Vanderdolen, further?
Yes, that goes some way to explaining it. It's going to be an online poll. That's what I heard from Counselor Verbeek.
Mr. Nepsi?
Through you, Deputy Chair. I think that's something that we could facilitate that way through our social media. I know Alex has done a phenomenal job in terms of our surveys that we had moving forward, so I would, I would look to extend a survey online, yes, that way, you know.
So it would be partially online? Partially or wholly?
The survey would be wholly online. I think a lot of our surveys are online with the ability to printout and drop off.
Well, I have some concerns because, you know, certain councils have been trying to make a political issue out of police coverage, and I'm not quite sure where this is going. But I know if you do an online poll, I mean, that can be pretty easily rigged. So like, I'm just worried about where this is going, who's using it for what. Like, I'm still a little adrift on this. But I guess I've got as many answers as I'm gonna get.
Okay, Counselor Verbeek, to the polling question or online?
I, through you, Mr. Chair. I, my, my hope when I had suggested survey was that it would certainly take place online, but that we could also have it available to people that don't have, you know, the internet or the ability to do it online. And to what Mr. Nepsi said, this was driven through the OAPSB as a potential, to assist municipalities in completing their community and wellness plan, reaching out with our police service boards, reaching out to the community about our policing service with that information to assist in creating our community wellness plans.
Thank you, Counselor Verbeek. I need to go to Mr. Bowman. Counselor Bowman, I skipped over him to go to Counselor Vanderdolen a few minutes ago.
Coming apart here. Anyway, just a couple of things. And this is obviously sort of working together with the OS, or the Police Service Board, but the Police Service Board is supposed to be sort of a standalone entity away from council. So I realize we should be working with them, and obviously, a number of the people on the Police Services Board are councilors, and the others are provincial appointees plus citizens. I think we're trying to get to a common goal, and I can see where it would make sense that any study or things being put out would be done on a joint venture. But again, you have to keep in mind that they're supposed to be separate entities, that where municipality is supposed to be looking at the dollars and cents. that where municipality is supposed to be looking at the dollars and cents and where the Police Services Board should be looking more at what is appropriate for the citizenry and the policing in general. So two different concepts. But in this case, I think the end result is to get the same type of information back. So I think it makes sense to work together to come up with some type of, whether it's electronic or it's paper, coming back in. I think it makes sense to work together on this one because we know that the province is trying to change how we use our police services boards and how they work. And I think this type of thing probably would help us out in the long run. So I would be supportive of working towards this. The problem is, it's, as councillor Chris has just pointed out, is when you put out surveys, you can really tip them wherever you want them to go. So it should be a sort of a general type thing that is used by other areas. And hopefully, the area in Essex County is doing that. So anyway, those are just some thoughts.
I'm going to beg your patience, Councillor Garan, for a second. Our CAO has a comment on what Morley has just said.
Thank you, and thank you, through you, Deputy Mayor. This is something, I think, when I polled council a few weeks ago, we've got Sergeant, both Inspector Miller coming, the first meeting in November, to discuss topics of your choice. I've asked you guys for stuff that wasn't operational in nature. I think this is something that fits that exactly in terms of where he sees this survey fitting, in terms of what other contracts they're doing as well. Sergeant Marshall is coming to explain the contract, similar to what they did in Tecumseh at a recent council meeting. So I've got them both coming the next meeting in November. This might be a perfect opportunity to, you know, move on this tonight. But note that we can, we can push them for questions and their comments on how they see that unfolding that way.
Thank you, Mr. Nepsey. Councillor Garan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good, I didn't know that was happening. But just to add to that, we can do all the polls we want. We can survey people. But the OPP themselves have to be receptive of whatever it is, too. And I think we're hearing on social media and people that have talked to me, we may be one of the safest communities in Canada. But there are some concerns out there about the policing and our services that we're getting. And there's nothing wrong with us revisiting on an annual basis and taking a look at how our services, how the money we're being, that we're spending and being used and utilized. My only concern with the motion is, is if we do polls, you know, will the OPP be receptive to them and will they do anything about them? We've been trying to get in front of the police now for quite some time, since I've been on any ways as council. So it's nice to hear that we are going to be able to have a chance to talk with them. Those are my concerns. People out in our community see that there's some issues. They want us to have a voice. I think the polling is good. But I think it might be premature if we don't have a plan, if we're not working with the services board and/or the OPP. My opinion.
Thank you, Councillor Garan. Any further comments or questions? Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Chair Maloche. I think it's our municipality. And we can ask whatever question we want of our residents. We can phase to them. We can say, do you like the taste of tap water? And we can do a survey out there and say, everybody, do you like it? I did a survey in my ward and I got over, I got about 65 comments, 65 back. And this, but this is just my ward, right? So let's, let's do it in the whole town. I have a policing question on there. And I haven't added up all of the responses, but it's not one of the most favorable topics. So I do think that we, as a municipality, despite whoever we hire, we can, we can do it, we should be doing a survey about hydro, actually, as well. We can ask whatever we want. It's our municipality. We run it. We have contractors that work for us. We need to touch base with our residents on how those contractors work for us periodically. And I feel that this is the tool to do it.
Thank you. Councillor Verbeek?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And this will be the last comment. Everybody's had an opportunity to talk.
Okay, thank you. It's just that I've heard the word poll come out a few times. And that's not the intent of this motion. When I suggest a survey, it's so that the residents can feel heard, so that they can comment. And certainly, at that point, maybe pose some of, some questions that they have that they are unable to ask of the police. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll ask all in favor of the motion. Opposed? Thank you. The motion's carried. Councillor Bowman, would you like your? Okay, thank you.
Next item is another notice of motion, 15.1.3, put forward by myself, Deputy Mayor Maloche, in regard to safety audit at intersections. This was a request to be made to the County of Essex Engineering and Transportation Department to do a safety audit at two intersections, County Road 20 and County Road 13. And the secondly, at County Road 20 and County Road 34, which is the Arner Town Line. I will be withdrawing this notice of motion. And the reasons why is because our administration has already put forward the request to Essex County Engineering Department. And they have taken it upon themselves to say, yes, we will, we will do those, this study. So there's no need to move the motion, which is good news. So on to 15.2. The following notice of motion is being presented tonight, only being presented and will be brought to our regular public council meeting of November the 4th for consideration. And that is, put forward by Councillor Bondi. It's in regard to lottery license at the town hall that council send a letter requesting the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario, the AGCO, to consider exemptions from or simplification of the lottery licensing process. So that's just for information. Next up is item number 16, reports and announcements from council members. I will start down to my far right and I'll start with Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Chair Maloche. In the absence of not having anything and in the absence of not being able to speak to your motion, I just want to put it forward as well that this council, the last term of council, did put forward a report on the corner of King Street and Erie. And so I'm not sure if now we're giving it to the county, if we're just waiting. Because that is still an important issue. And I don't want to just give it to the county and wait. I'm hoping that we can still work on the report that we requested before. I believe 2018, I'm going to say March 2018. I hope we still work on it. I know we can't debate things here right now, but I'm just raising that it's important in Harrow. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually should have went a little further. And I'll ask Councillor Susie if he has anything that he would like to announce this evening? We're just looking for announcements, like if you have any events or anything in the community that she'd like to talk about.
Not that I'm like aware of.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Susie. Councillor Hoffman? Nothing? Councillor Vanderdolen?
Nothing, thanks.
Councillor Bowman?
I still have tickets for the Citizen of the Year, which is this coming Saturday. So tickets, $30. Got them in my little hands here. So if you'd like some tonight, please see me.
Thanks, Councillor Bowman. I'll go over to Councillor Garan.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone, this week is School Bus Safety Week. So be a little extra careful out there when you're driving.
And Councillor Verbeek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to invite the people, especially in Ward Two and in specifically the McGregor-Gesto area, to come out tomorrow night to the community center. We're going to have our first planning meeting for a little Christmas get together. So tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the community center in McGregor for that. Also, a reminder about the Tiny Tots Parade on Thursday, October 31st at 10:00 in the morning. I don't think I've ever missed it. I always have a grandbaby to bring. It's a lot of fun for the kids.
Thank you, councillors, for those tidbits. Now we can move on to bylaws. And I'm going to pass this over to our clerk, Mr. Robert Ogay.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Under item 17 on the agenda, bylaws. 1852 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a lease agreement between the town and Richard Brett for the management and operation of the skate sharpening and pro shop at the Essex Centre Sports Complex. Third reading?
Looking for a motion? Councillor Bowman, Councillor Garan, all in favor? That's carried.
1857, also for third reading, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings from the October 7th regular council meeting?
Need a mover? Councillor Bowman, supported by Councillor Garan, all in favor? Carried?
For three readings this evening, bylaw 1855 being a bylaw to appoint a weed inspector for the town of Essex.
By Councillor Vanderdolen, supported by Councillor Verbeek. All in favor?